And welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We also have Julie and Colin from our team here. What's up you guys? So excited to have you guys here today on this Thursday. I hope it is lovely weather wherever you are this February 8th. Excited to be with you today. We're going to be talking about a really cool feature inside of the Get Oiling system that you may not yet be familiar with, but you will be by the time we are done with today's call. This is a feature that was developed over the years to really help support you in the actions that you're taking in your business on a regular basis. And to help you improve on things that are just a little bit tricky to improve on. Because when we think about performing just regular actions in our business on an ongoing basis, we don't always know what better looks like. Aside from maybe looking at our check or looking at our rank, but those aren't the only ways to know that you're doing well or that you could do better. And there are even more productive ways to go about tracking what you're doing so that you can improve your results in a way that provides you more immediate feedback and ways that work a little bit more closely with what's been proven to work with psychology, right? And with things that are just generally supportive to keeping our motivation going. So we're excited to get into this with you here today. I'm going to go ahead and make you a co-host as well Greg, because there is a cool feature update that Greg is going to share with us today. We've got lots of updates all the time, always something new. So I've got some slides that we're going to get into here today. Head over into the chat. Let me know where in the world you're coming in from. And of course, as always, if you have questions, you can go ahead and start adding those to the Q and A. This is a live session that we host every Thursday at noon Eastern US time. It's open to anyone in all of Young Living. It's a great place to come and learn more about how to grow your business, meet a really great community. That's very team Young Living centric, meaning we are all one big team. And of course, if you are a Get Oiling user, you'll benefit from learning all the great ways you can use this platform to help you grow. So we're going to pop out of our video, get into these slides and get the show on the road here. Thanks for joining us today, you guys. Really excited to have you. So as promised today, we're going to talk about how you can stay on track with your business using the Digital Upline Coach. So today we will talk about the Digital Upline Coach, which is essentially a digital age spin on an old school growth secret. And this specifically, I've been working with a small group of folks over the last five weeks. They've been using this in a particular way and I have been seeing incredible feedback from the folks that are using this. They're doing things like enrolling multiple people a week, reactivating old customers and members, and just generally getting into excellent new habits for this new year. And of course, into you know, a new space of growing your business the way that you want to see it moving. So we'll talk today about how you can set up your own digital applying coach and put it to use, just like these people are who are seeing these amazing results. And then of course, we will get into live help and Q and A. So a little bit of housekeeping here at the top of the call. If you have questions, they are welcome. We would love for you to join us with questions. We are not just here to talk about today's training topic. Add those questions to the Q and A now if you've got them. Or if you have them throughout the call, you're still welcome to add those. If you're watching this in our Facebook group, or if you are checking this out as a replay on our YouTube channel, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to join one of these live calls on Thursdays. If you'd like to work together on a live call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review to secure a spot for you. We usually do these at the close of these Thursday calls. And if you are looking for help with getting things done, if you want someone to do some of this work for you, if you want a hired hand for any number of things that pertain to the use of your Get Oiling system, we've got an incredible team that can help you. If you go to getoiling.com/concierge, you can learn more about our team who is capable of helping you with everything from designing your website to setting up systems, helping you get your system period and Get Oiling set up complete in the first place. And then of course, ongoing things. So feel free to reach out and get to know our team and how they can help you. Greg, I want to go ahead and toss this over to you. I know you said you had a quick update on the campaigns feature. So why don't we take a quick look at that before we dive into our Digital Upline Coach?
For sure. Yeah, let me hop over here and get the screen share going. So the change is also posted in our Facebook group, but the change is under campaigns. So if you click on campaigns and you have a, you have a campaign that is, I'll just pick any one of these. Okay, I got one that worked. I have one that's set up on a specific date. So now there's a new links on the bottom of all. So let me go back to a different campaign here. You see this one only has a view recipients link. So let me go back here and I'll show you what these do. These two links are new. And what they do, this first one is available on every campaign. Basically you click it and it'll take you to the contact manager and show you who always receiving that campaign. As you saw there briefly, there was nobody receiving that campaign, but it's a nice way for the campaign messages. Previously you had to go back to the list and then click to see it. So that's a nice way to jump to that. Now there's a new link here. I think this is going to be the biggest time saver. When you have a campaign set up on a specific date, and I'm just making note of this is November 25th of last year. So I switch over to ASAP, you can see that it goes away, that that adjust button goes away. So now if I pick a specific date, I'll go back to the member, whatever it was. And that adjust recipients link comes back. Now what this does, excuse me, and what this does is anybody who's on, who's receiving the campaign, it will make sure that they're all synced up to these dates down below. Previously, if you would change the dates, anyone who's on the campaign would not be updated. And sometimes that's okay, depending on what you're doing. But sometimes you want everyone to be synced up to the new schedule. I mean, there's still, you know, there's a slight risk of duplicating or missing a message if you do that depending. But for a lot of people who were, you know, they got a couple of people in there, just want to sync it up. You can just click this button. It'll say, okay, do you want to adjust it based on this? You hit okay, and then it'll go ahead and say contacts have been synced. So nice little time saver there, especially if you use this date based campaign. If you're not familiar with the date based campaign, what that is, it sends it on this, sends the campaigns on a specific calendar day. So like these two have these, these specific days, if you change this, for example, to here, it'll update to know, you know, the day after that kind of thing. So that's what that is. It's great for like events, anything that is tied around a calendar date launches, that kind of thing. So but this way, if you ever make changes to a date and you want to make sure everyone's on the new schedule, just make sure to click this adjust recipients link after that. But yeah, that's today's little update.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. All right, you guys. So let's get into this, the Digital Upline Coach. If you already use a Digital Upline Coach, maybe head over into the chat and let us know if you do. If you are someone who is currently a part of the New Year intensive, if you are a part of, of that bootcamp that we have been running on Mondays, maybe come over and let folks know in the chat how that's been going for you. Cause I know that using the coach has been a really big piece of that, and we're seeing some really cool results in that group. So, all right, let's get into this, the Digital Upline Coach. What is it and how do we use it? So I've been in this industry for easily a decade and a half doing what I do. And I have, you know, studied what's worked best. I've advised on what's worked best. And there's really only one thing that's always worked. There's a lot of things that can work in this business, because this is really an individualistic business, right? Network marketing is you as a brand, you as an individual, being able to go out and build trust at a network of people that you can distribute products through, right? Building that network out to get product out into the world. Now, in order to build that network, there are a number of things that you need to do. Some of them are more valuable and important than others. But there's only one thing that I've ever seen to consistently work, to build momentum, to launch a business and to really grow a, by a business to the level of financial success that most people are looking for when they decide to build a business in this industry. And that is accountability based challenges. Now this doesn't necessarily have to be for isolated periods of time. But it is very helpful to run challenges or to go through periods of time where you are participating in focused intense activity. Now, what I'm suggesting that you do here today is not necessarily just engage in a six week or longer period of time where you are, are really focusing on a particular few activities, but that you find a way to kind of take the benefits of this and integrate it into your weekly schedule. Just make this something that is sustainable for the long term. So stepping out of hustle and putting the smart things that happen in the hustle into what your daily life looks like. So that we can truly as Young Living brand partners be a product of our product. And if we're hustling all the time, we're not going to be a good product of our product. Cause we're going to be just adrenal shot, tired, stressed out people. Can we agree with that? So accountability based challenges are the thing that I've seen work better than anything else in this industry to grow a business. And what we do in an accountability based challenge is we identify the activities that you can perform as a brand partner that increase your business, right? That get new people signed up and that get more people ordering more product. Right? So what are the activities that build your bottom line? Once we know what those are, we do more of them, right? And then we track those things that we're doing. So typically, we are aware of how well we're doing in our Young Living business based on the dollar sign on our check or based on our rank, right? So looking at the structure of our organization, the volume of our organization. And then of course, what that speaks to us as, as dollars that we receive as a result of growing our business. Those are not the most important metrics to track. Those are in fact, the results of the important metrics that we should be tracking, right? So what I want to encourage you to do, and this is what we will ultimately be able to do by using the Digital Upline Coach, is to start getting clear on what the things are that grow your business so that you can do more of them. And if you're keeping track of how much of that work you're doing, then it's very easy for you to start to see where your increases come from so that you can build more of that in to how you work on a regular basis, right? And then the final piece, and this is really what tips the scales, is accountability. It's sharing the work that you're doing, not just saying, I am going to hit my next rank by X date and saying that out loud. Maybe saying that in the chat here, you're more than welcome to share what you are working toward right now if you'd like to. But if you go a step beyond that and you actually demonstrate to another person that you have shared your goal with, the work that you're doing in order to get there, you are that much more likely, just so much more likely to be able to reach that goal. So why this works is we are clearing the way for our income producing activities, right? We are, we're moving all of the noise out of the way. Now there are lots of things you can do, lots of perfectly great things that you should still be doing. I'm not suggesting that we throw out every type of activity that isn't solely an income producing one, but that you consider creating more space for those activities. Now, income producing activities are going to be inviting, sharing, following up, closing. That's it. There's a lot more that you do. Again, there's, you, you start conversations with people, maybe five times a day, I hope. Maybe engage in conversations toward the point at which an invitation to look at Young Living would be possible. There's a lot of work that isn't income producing, right? There's work that creates more opportunities for those income producing activities. But these are ultimately the things that we want to be doing the most of. The things that get Young Living in front of people, that get people interacting with Young Living so that they can decide whether or not they want to get started. Following up if somebody had questions or, you know, needed to start at another date and then ultimately getting them signed up. These are the things that are most important to your business at the end of the day. Now, tracking means that you can get consistent results and improvement. How many of you actually track your income producing activities? Do you know how many invitations you've made in the last 30 or 60 days? Do you know how many people you have sat down and shared Young Living with in the last 30 to 60 days, followed up with, right? I'm sure we all know how many people we have gotten started. And that may be the only number that you're looking at. But we really want to take a step back, like I mentioned, and take a look at what is creating that opportunity to close, right? And these are income producing activities. Now, the reason why we want to track is because we can't improve what we can't measure. If we want better results than we've been getting, we need to be able to look at what we're doing and know what it was. And we can't measure something that we're not tracking, right? If we want to make it better, we need to be able to measure it, right? How many times did I invite? How many times did I share? How many times did I follow up? How many times and with which person did I follow up? And then ultimately, how many people did I get started? If we want to improve that measurement, we got to be able to track it. And then of course, we want to have clear accountability based on the actions we're taking, not just by saying we're going to do a thing, but by showing the work that we're doing to get it done. So there are a lot of different ways, especially in Young Living, and especially if you are a Get Oiling user, that you can be spending time on your business, lots of ways. You could be creating newsletters, you can be starting challenges, you could be promoting the latest, greatest discount sale promo, et cetera. Lots of things that you can be doing. But some things that you can be doing, I think we can all agree, are much, much, much more valuable than others, right? So this is why we have the Digital Upline Coach. Essentially what we're doing here is we're providing an easy way for you to set your goal and share it, be encouraged along the way, and then share and track your progress toward achieving that goal. It comes with built in suggestions for activities that you might want to engage in. So these could be very high level income producing activities, but they could be things that you might need a reminder to engage with on an ongoing basis. You also, if you set a goal, of course, we're going to give you a, a visible sort of bar where you can actually track your progress, right? Your X percentage toward your goal. And so you're getting credit toward that goal by completing the to-dos that you already are going to have in your system, right? So if you invited these folks to your event where you are going to be sharing Young Living, you have invited those folks to a presentation, those who attended, learned about Young Living, you have shared, right? So as you're checking those things off, you are updating those contacts in your system. You are getting that credit toward your, your progress goal. And the cool thing about this is, is that you can customize how you work and track your business by using the coach and a couple of other really cool features in the Get Oiling system. And then this goes to the next level where you can actually track your team's progress so that you are rewarding folks for doing the right work. So this, and I'm speaking to all of you who are, who are leading a team right now. If you are leading a team of brand partners, this is really important. We want to make sure that we aren't just edifying the people who are achieving rank right now. We want to edify the people who are doing the work. You can reach a rank and sit pretty on that rank, right? And, and good for you if that's what you're doing. But there are people who are out there doing the work that need the encouragement. And if you are connecting to your team with this digital applying coach, you can do exactly that. You can see who's on their way to pop their next rank because you're seeing who is doing the work. And this is a really cool thing. And I'll actually show you what this looks like here in a bit. So let's go into Get Oiling system, set it up, learn, we'll, we'll see how you can actually set yours up. And then I'll walk you through the best ways to use it, because not everyone is super clear on exactly how to do this. There are some fairly straightforward ways to do this, but there's one trick. If you know how to use it, and I'll show you where you can go to get the shortcut for it. If you know where, how to use it, you will save yourself so much time. And it will be, using the Digital Upline Coach will be just a thing that happens in the background. You won't even know you're doing it if you do it the way that I'll show you here in a second. All right. So let me get out of here and show you really quick where you can find your Digital Upline Coach inside of Get Oiling. So it's not this progress bar actually up here at the top. It's going to be right down here where you see Digital Upline Coach. Now here, Jane hasn't been participating in any activity at all, but you can see that we've got a progress bar here. She's got a 63 point goal. I'll show you how we know how many points that is here in just a bit. But in this dashboard, you can see your coach, you'll see an encouraging message here based on the coach that you've set up. You'll be able to see tasks that are recommended to you based on the goal that you've set for yourself. Any to-dos that you have will show up here as well. Sometimes those are tied to coaching activities. And then you can actually see here that we are suggesting that you engage in particular types of activities and in certain quantities, right? So this, for this week, we need to invite five times. We need to present maybe with our website. We could do that five times. We want to follow up with five people, connect with five referrals. So this is a suggestion. Now, of course, when you've done something like this, you could obviously go over here, say I did it. You'll want to attach it to whoever, whoever your contact is. And it will actually add that coaching activity here for you. So that is something that you can do. But let's go in and talk about how we set this up. So if you want to set yours up, if you haven't done so yet, you can actually just click on your coach and you're going to want to choose your amount of time that you're going to be spending on your business. But I would say, I'd qualify this, this further. How much time are you going to be spending on income producing activities? Cause what I find is a lot of folks, when they get started with the Digital Upline Coach, is that they, they know that they spent maybe 20 hours a week on their business. But we don't necessarily understand how much time we fill with things that aren't productive for our business. So I want to encourage you, whichever one of these you think is you, if you haven't done this before, go back by one. Because I don't want you to feel demoralized at all for not reaching your goal. I want to see you hit a hundred percent or greater of your point goal, right? So based on however much you want to spend on your business on a weekly basis, you're going to want to go in and choose this. So I, Jane is set five. She's just getting her feet wet or she's, you know, kind of taking things slow with her business. You can choose your, your settings based on whether or not you have a brand partner growing with you. You're going to get different suggestions for activities based on either of these. So we'll save and continue. And then on the next page, we can actually go in and choose which coach we would like to have. They're all going to give you the same number of points. You're going to be doing the same work regardless. You're just going to see a slightly different way of messaging, right? So it's, you know, it might be a little kinder or a little more snazzy or, or fun, sassy, et cetera, right? So just pick whichever one you would like. I've got crock here selected already, so we'll keep the crock. This is the snappy one. And there you go. You got a cute little message. Now, after you've chosen your coach, there's one other thing that I want you to make sure that you do. And that is to come over here to your contact settings. Go to general settings. And make sure that this box right here is checked. Because your coach is going to show up in your email and it's going to suggest to you what you ought to be doing, right? Especially if you have any to-dos for your existing contacts, you will have a digest of the things that you need to be seeing happening in your business on a daily basis as it is set up in your Get Oiling account. So make sure that you have that good to go. This is checked, hit save and your coach is fully set up. Now let's get into how to use it. So super basic. You can actually scroll through whatever you see here on this page. So again, maybe I did follow up with a prospect, so I'm going to go ahead and say that I did this. I'm going to see, I followed up once, follow up with a prospect. I'm going to put my contact name in here. You do need to have a contact in here in order for this to work. This does have my activity points as two. I'm going to hit finish. I followed up with that person. And you can see that my progress has moved ahead. Now what I want to call your attention to is the volume of points that are assigned to each of these activities. Now I'll come over here, you can actually see there's even more. So if you hold a product experience party and create a Good Oiling event for it, that's 10 points. Why? Because you're hosting a live in-person event that allows people together as a group, using the power of social proof to experience Young Living and the opportunity to join, right? Another high point value is bringing someone with you to someone else's event, right? So you are going with someone to an event. You are the social proof in that instance. Again, super powerful. That's seven points, right? So there's lots of different points for lots of different types of activities, but they all fall into a couple of key categories. And the next thing I'm going to show you what to do is, is how you can, you can apply Digital Upline Coach points to the activities that you're already performing with your contacts. So I'm going to go find a contact in the system here. And I'm going to give myself a to-do, or perhaps maybe what I'll do first is I will add a note, because I did just invite this person to, to attend an event, right? So maybe I, I will say that I sent them a message. So invited to Thursday night event. Will attend with neighbor. And I did that earlier today. I'm going to go ahead and put that down here. And I'm going to give myself a to-do here, because I want to be able to actually log this as an invitation. So I'm going to add that past action. And the to-do was, let's see, this is a coaching activity. The to-do was invite to Thursday night event. And now you can see, we have lots of different things that we can do here. But they're in a couple of key categories. So enrolling, this is going to be the highest value of points for the most part, right? You can see it's 12 points to enroll a new member on loyalty rewards. Enroll any member that's eight points, right? Making a retail sale, five, et cetera. Inviting. So in this case, I'm going to call this a text to invite prospect, because I didn't pick up the phone and call. So that's what I did. I invited via Facebook Messenger in this case, as we saw the note previously. There are my points. I'm going to add that to do. And then I am going to go and find that. Now I do have a bunch of very old to-dos here, because this is, I've used this for demos. Here we go. So I have invite to Thursday night event. So I did that. I'm going to check that off. That is now in my past actions. And I can come back here to my Digital Upline Coach and you can see that my progress has moved farther. Now, I want, I want to show you how you can save yourself a boatload of time. So what you just saw me do was I made my note, but then I needed to create a to-do to attach to my note so that you could see that you, you did the, the thing that moved the needle here, right? Here's what you want to do. We have a really cool feature. It's one of my favorite ones in the whole platform called follow-up plans. It's over here under contact settings. Follow-up plans. Now your follow-up plans, you can create, you can customize. Or you can get one that's already made for you if you're following along with our training in the Success Academy, which is over here. If you go to the Success Academy under online resources and courses in the Marketing Mastery Workshop. Don't know if you guys have seen this yet, but let's go over and check it out. I'll show you exactly where to go to get a full set of follow-up plans that you can use that take your, your lead from initial conversation all the way through finding their hero product, falling in love with Young Living and being your next best customer. So you're going to get into the Marketing Mastery Workshop. This particular resource is actually under the workshop calls here in week two. What was that? We have our resource here. All right. So these are automations. I'm going to go ahead and claim them and show you that in these automations, we have follow-up plans. So here's relationship building. So this follow-up plan in relationship building is basically setting us up to the point that we are able to move toward a Young Living focused conversation. So in this particular case, if we've just met somebody and we want to connect with them, establish a relationship, build rapport and move toward a point where they might tell us something that makes our oily spidey senses go up and say, there's oil for that. I could share with them. We want to take notes throughout that whole process. We want to take notes throughout that whole process, make sure that we are staying in contact with that person and so on. So this follow up plan is going to allow you to do that. Now, the next place we go from there is the consultative shift. Now, this is the next phase where we learn more about their goal and and how Young Living might be able to help them. We gather resources and then we invite. So you can see here, this is text prospect who invite to a presentation. So we're going to send them this message to invite. That's going to give us five points. The next phase is the sharing to sign up. Again, there are lots of steps here. But they're all things that we need to do. And so here you can, here you go right here. This is where we actually share. That's seven points. And then here is where they sign up. So let's go back to our contact here. If I go to this contact and I add that follow up plan or following the training there, I apply the the automation. Sharing to sign up is the name of that automation. So if I run that automation on this contact, I now have a new set of to do's for this person that are going to, again, sorry, be on the very last page of these to do. Here we go. So I need to get clear on what I'm going to share in this case. I want to have product recommendations ready and tools prepared. So once I have those, I'll check that off. And then I'm going to sit down and share with them. And when I do, right, I'm going to add my notes from that sharing experience and any answers to their questions. This is going to be after we've had, I've actually sat down with them and had a meeting. So maybe we sat down and I shared Young Living with them. So this was an in-person meeting. So here we go. So meeting, this is a shared products. And I've I've done that. And so now I can, since I added my notes, I'm going to check that off. And because that means that I've completed this task, I have now shared. I've got those seven points. Maybe they went ahead and signed up. Here's my if yes. I do need to apply my new customer checklist automation to this contact. But I can go ahead and check this off because this person said yes, and they signed up. They are now a customer. Now I can go and add that next automation. New customer checklist. And I'll have a new set of to do's to follow. So if you want to learn how to use, that's the specific series and this resource bundle. Do make sure that you get into the Success Academy and head over to the Marketing Mastery Workshop. You're going to learn all about what you need to know for this series in about the second, it's the second module there. It's all important and you need to know it in order. If you haven't been through this yet, this is the most complete blueprint you're going to find alongside the tools that you need to actually execute everything that you need to do inside the system. This is the soup to nuts, everything that you need to run a brand partner business. And make the most of your Get Oiling system at the same time. So essentially what we're doing here, guys, is we're creating or using the ones that we've already created, that we created for you, creating follow up plans, right? And we're applying those to our contact. Now, I've just shown you how to apply a follow up plan to your contact using an automation because that's how I set that system up. I wanted to remove a previous follow up plan from them if I was moving them to the next stage of the pipeline. But if you wanted to create your own follow up plan, all you need to do is head over here to add a to do to your contact. And then you can choose to add a follow up plan. Right? You can pick whichever one that you want from here after you have created one. And then that's going to automatically populate your to do list that you'll be able to see both on your contact. You'll be able to see it on your dashboard down here as well. And then you will also see this on your digital upline coach dashboard as well. So you can see all of these to do's. Right? That are relevant for today on the digital upline coach. Now I'm going to pop out of sharing really quick because I want to get into a different account and show you guys what it looks like when you are operating as a team, sharing your your progress together. So I've got an amazing group of folks who are a part of a coaching group that we started at the first of the year. And and they have agreed to share their progress over the last last handful of weeks. And you can actually go in and see how people have been doing, how they've been spending time, and it's kind of amazing. So this is current. We've got some folks are well above their their goal points, which is fantastic. And you can actually see everything here if we wanted to. Sean has absolutely been crushing it, by the way. You can see what kind of work they've been doing. Obviously, it doesn't share anyone's specific information, but you can actually see in this case, oh, my gosh, just following up with all kinds of non-members here in this case, right? But then you can also see here in the case of Andrea, there's, you know, we're engaging in personal development. That is worth five points, but it's worth something, right? There are things that fall under team leadership. And then we've got all of these higher value inviting, following up, enrolling, all kinds of really great stuff that you can keep track of here. And so now you can actually go in and see, you know, based on the category, right? How many points are they pulling per category? So this is presentations and meetings. This is inviting and following up. This is enrolling. These are going to be your sort of top income producing activities. And you can see how this person is just absolutely crushing it with the vast majority of their time being spent in those categories. So you can actually see this kind of thing with your members, or sorry, with your your brand partners, the folks that are working alongside you as a team. And and of course, reward people for the amazing work that they're doing, which in this case I've been doing in that coaching group, rewarding them with with private calls to work on branding and website and things like that, which has been a lot of fun. So congratulations to everybody in there, by the way, should doing amazing work. So if you guys have questions, feel free to bring them on. I hope that this opened your eyes a little bit to how you can be using the coach. My biggest recommendation, other than just starting and using it, is to use those follow up plans. Either create your own or follow the system that I've created for you with the series of automations from the Marketing Mastery Workshop. That really does kind of get all of the administrative setting things up out of the way so that you're just checking off boxes and following a system. It just makes life a lot easier. The other thing that I would encourage you to do, and this is a little bit more of a mindset thing, is to look for, so there may be a thing that you're doing and you don't feel like it is on that list. The closest thing to what you're doing is a fine thing to select there. That so there's, again, there are a lot of things that we can do, but there are very few things that we can, like, that we can do that make a difference in the big picture, right? If we're focusing on the bottom line and the things that need to be taking place in terms of our actions to move us to where we want to be, those fall into a slim category of of things that you could be doing. And I understand, believe me, how much we would love to just get credit for every little bitty thing that we do, and you can go in and do that. But I would really encourage you to just use this as an exercise or as a tool in this case, to really give yourself perspective. Right? Because again, there's all kinds of stuff that we could do. We could make things super cute and and we could, you know, make our emails look like they came from a shoe company or whatever, right? We could do cute stuff, or we could do the stuff that moves the needle, right? It's really easy to get caught up in the stuff that really doesn't matter quite as much at the end of the day to our business. And this tool will help you keep your eyes focused on that because it's literally saying this is how many points that you are trying to get this week. And the like, the actual activities that move the graph faster, the ones, those are the ones that actually make your business more money. They get you better results. They're ultimately going to get you what you signed up for, right? Okay, Rebecca says a question that is not the topic for today. That's totally fine. Pretty sure we've covered how to make a questionnaire. Can you point me in the right direction? And can that questionnaire be printed for those who don't do electronics? So it depends on the second part, but on the first part, I believe that we have a training on forms, creating forms. Actually, before I change my share, let me make sure I'm in the right account. So if you use pages and Get Oiling, you can create custom forms. And those custom forms. Here we go. Those custom forms allow you to ask questions, to take in information, et cetera. I don't remember offhand which of our previous trainings this would have been on, but essentially what you're doing, just to point you in the right direction, is you're going to look at your pages. This will be under like, you know, the page editor in terms of like playlists on our on our YouTube channel. So if I go to create a page, I'll just use this one as an example. You could have the questionnaire just be the page itself and have nothing else on it. But in this one in particular has a pop up. So this is a pop up lead form. You could also, again, display it on the page if you wish. And then the fields to show is what you want to look at. And this is where you can actually start asking your questions. You add fields. You decide whether you want a short or long text answer, whether or not you want to have a dropdown list. And then, of course, you can edit what's on that list, right? So adding a maybe a yes or a no. And then you can, in this list, choose where this information goes. If you edit these items specifically, you can tag them or you can add an automation that sends them to a new place, et cetera. You can get very, very dialed in with conditional response using forms like this. So that is how you're going to build your questionnaire. Depending on how you want to use it, of course, that's how you would set it up on the backend. It's not necessarily going to be something that I would print, though. I would maybe create something similar and do that in Canva. And then there is, after you create the PDF in Canva with the with the form, because there's great templates in Canva for doing that. There is a website. I don't know how to pronounce this, S E J D A dot com. This is a free PDF filler. So here's a bill. You can actually upload your PDF here and you can create fillable ones if you wanted to actually make that something non-digital, or of course, you could print it if you're just, if you wanted it to be offline for people. How do you create an automation from a to do? So Ana Connie, can you tell me a little bit more about what you're wanting to achieve there? So to do's in your system are going to be you focused, right? Because it's you to do. Whereas automations, usually if they're connected to to a contact and you want something to trigger when a contact takes an action, right? Like they opt in for something or they click a link in an email or a link or they complete a lesson in an online class, you can use an automation to trigger something that moves forward from there. And that can include the application of a follow up plan. So a follow up plan, or sorry, an automation can apply a follow up plan to a contact. But checking off a box of a to do isn't going to trigger another automation for you. You can, as I showed you in that example, have a follow up plan that reminds you to apply the next automation in the series. Because again, these are you actions and not contact actions. But if you want to maybe let me know what you have in mind, I'd happy to translate that into how you can automate that with Get Oiling. Let's see. Angie says, how do we need to set up the checklist or new customer, or is there a basic one that we can personalize? Yeah, so that checklist, meaning the the follow up plan, we actually do have some that you can use as a starting point or that you could just use period. So again, that's under contact settings to find those follow up plans. And I believe we look at the last page here. Here's a new member follow up plan. It's created by Get Oiling. And in here, you'll see that there are specific activities. And some of these do have coaching activities attached to them, like a care call in this case. So this is all care calls for a year after getting someone started, right? So that would be like a basic one that you could start with. And then, of course, the ones like the relationship building, sharing to sign up, et cetera, that I mentioned, those are absolutely free to you as a good oiling user. You're just going to find those inside the Marketing Mastery Workshop where you'll also find the training on how to use them because those, obviously, those to do's are based on a very specific set of sort of tactics and strategies that are shared there. But you could you could duplicate a follow up plan, whether that's one that I created in that course or one that our system has here. You can duplicate that and make it your own to your liking as well. How do you put in past activities and get credit for it with the coach? Yeah, so what you would do here is you could either apply a follow up plan like like what we were just looking at here. So if it's something that you already did, you could apply the follow up plan and and then just check those boxes off for that person. But if you are wanting to keep better detailed records with, you know, it was this date, this time, et cetera, then you would be going to that contact. And let me go back and find me again here. Following the first example that I gave, you would actually go in and create your past action. And you would, this that would be here. So you would put whatever the past date and time was. And then just make sure you give yourself a to do after this past action, right? So if we if we had an in-person meeting, there would be a meeting here, put whatever it was, whatever the date was, et cetera. And and then after you add that past action, you'd be able to to go and add your coaching activity. And when you do that, so here, we'll just say maybe I someone duplicated on my team and this happened on the fourth. So this would have been team duplication. And you could add some notes in here as well. When you add this to do, it is going to show up in here appropriately in order as a past action after you check it off. But you will have to add that as a to do first if you are trying to like put the historic activity in there. So it just kind of depends on what your what your goal is for it. I hope that that made sense. Feel free to ask follow up questions. All right, let me see. I don't think we had anyone signed up for a live work review. So yeah, if anyone has requests, if there's anything that you would like to look at together, do you want a review of something that you've been working on? Or do you have more questions about about this process of kind of setting up and running the coach? Let's see. I know, Ana Connie, I'm always so impressed when you're here. It's like 2:00 AM for you, right? I would be loopy at this hour. And yeah, so when, if you have a question, feel free to shoot me an email if you have a follow up for this. I know you stay up super late in Japan to to get on to these calls. Let's see. When you enter a past action, can there be an option to attach a coaching activity for that that past action? I like that idea, Denise, actually, as like as a functional thing, because that that could streamline that just a little bit. If if you know, it's not a to do, right? I mean, you could create a to do after the fact, then you got to go like I just did and like sometimes scroll through and find it and then check it off. So we can put that. We could we could put that on to our wishlist. Also, thank you, Ana Connie. And Jackie. Awesome. Anybody else have questions or anything else you would like to look at today? Let me know. Julian says, how would you recommend starting this formula for larger teams so it doesn't become overwhelming? Well, okay, so what I would do is I would get clear on I would get clear on what the activities are that you want to focus on and incentivize. And then I would create a follow up plan or or a series of follow up plans. So if you, like noting that training that I gave as an example in the Marketing Mastery Workshop with those automations that apply and remove the follow up plans. What I basically did there was I I mapped out a pipeline. And that pipeline is from initial contact with someone who we have not shared with yet, all the way through to this is a customer who's in love with product and I helped them find their hero product, right? Like first ninety days of their of their being a part of Young Living. Obviously, use my resources to save yourself time. If these are not, if these are Get Oiling users, save yourself time, use my resources, get them into that training. If you have a large team, you could also just ping me because like we we like doing trainings for large teams and and helping you guys with stuff like this. So so let me know. But essentially, sorry, Julian, short answer. But essentially, sorry, Julian, short answer, map out what the activities are that you want to incentivize. And, and, and kind of set a goal for what those are. So for an example, what I've done in the bootcamp is, um, I'm not basing it on a number of points achieved. I'm basing it on a percentage of goal met. And then I'm also taking a specific focus, uh, and looking at the type of activity, right? So maybe I'm wanting to, in the first week, um, really be looking for the folks who are, um, starting new conversations. Or I want to be looking for the folks in, in week three who are giving the most presentations. Right? So, um, you know, getting the most activity points in that range. So there's an administrative side of this, but essentially what you want to be doing is being very clear upfront with your team. These are the activities that we are prioritizing. This is how you can, um, log those activities in Get Oiling. And then of course, if you have a follow-up plan, you can give them with a resource bundle, then it just becomes easier for them to check off, I did this, I did this, I did this. And, uh, and they don't have to spend quite as much time, uh, kind of entering in, uh, the data. But yeah, seriously, if you want to run a point space challenge using the digital upline coach, just shoot me a message. I'm, I'm sure that's, uh, that would be a fun thing. I know you have a lot of good oiling users on your team. So, um, so yeah, we'd be happy to help with that. Um, Anna Connie, you have a new website layout. You'd like some feedback on it? I would love to help with that. Let me bring you out and we can go take a look. Top of the morning to you. Hi.
Good morning, good morning. All right. So I've been doing a lot of soul searching brand wise and, um, just doing a lot of masterclasses and going back to a lot of the Get Oiling stuff. So I kind of did what you suggested the last time we talked and tried to do like a work with me page. Um, but as I've kind of gone into this like deep branding journey, I've really started to realize that I am going to just go with more of like, um, mindful pregnancy and beyond, um, sort of niche. Instead of kind of what you see here, which is like the work with me, which kind of highlighted the fat mermaid stuff. Um, and instead of what I have here, where it's like work with me online, work with me on the water, work with me, you know, in person. I'm trying to figure out how to take what I have. So I have two avatars that I'm trying to, um, speak to and make it so that it makes sense when they come to my, my homepage or my work with me. And so instead of, I still kind of have to keep on the water because I migrated fat mermaids into, you know, under that Anna Connie Walters brand. Um, I just don't need to highlight it because I got a DOD contract that they're going to do all like my booking, my advertising, all I'm doing is really showing up until I kind of go into retirement mode where I know I'm going to be settled in a place where I can market to like the local community. And so the bump baby and beyond is kind of where I'm targeting. I just don't know how to, like the work with me. I have empowerment, which is kind of like that, the, the mindfulness and, and, um, stuff, because my second avatar is the, the person that is trying to maybe, she's a workaholic. She hasn't thought about maybe starting a family just yet, or she's starting to think about having a family, but she's dealing with fertility issues because she's, um, doesn't have a good stress management, you know, system or practices. And so there's that part of the spectrum or there's the, the avatar that's already pregnant or, um, a mom who's struggling with, you know, um, the stress management. She's, you know, she's overwhelmed with the anxiety of a new pregnancy or a first time pregnancy or being at just a first time mom. Um, and so I'm trying to now re-go back and take everything that I've been learning. And now like all this stuff, like the water sports, take that out, because it's not going to, you know, I don't want to confuse my people um, by putting too much and making my front door, as you say it, more targeted towards, um, you know, fertility, kind of, you know, women or the, the women who are currently pregnant or a first time mom who's just dealing with anxiety and overwhelmed from, you know, being a first time parent or a first time pregnancy.
Okay. Um, so first, uh, congrats on that contract. That makes life easy.
It does.
Easier. Um, okay. So you, I, I, I think that there's probably a way to look at your avatar as one person. It's moms and moms-to-be. Um, a, a, a woman who, uh, is going to have children and who has had children. Um, we are, we are all that at some point, right? So there's, there's, there's sort of a circle here that you're speaking to and, and that is a, a cycle of life. It's contained in that same woman. So I think, I think that it's possible to maybe look at this as it's, it's just her. Um, and it may mean that you're digging in a little bit into sort of what the commonalities are. Like if you get those moms and moms to be in the same room, they all vibe on some of the same stuff. Whatever that is, is going to be part of the through line for how you're communicating the value of what's on your site here. Um, and that I think also kind of helps you to basically say, hey, hey mama, right? And that includes mama-to-be, you're here, you're in the right place. If this is you, go here. If this is you, go here, right? And then from that point forward, right? So I'm looking for mom-to-be resources and then on the mom-to-be resources, work with me is one of those items. And then there's certain ways you work with them. So basically what we're doing is we are, they're walking into the lobby of your building, that's your homepage. And, and you're showing them first, you know, the, whether that's the, the decor, if you will, right? Uh, and the signs on the wall, et cetera, showing them that they're in the right building. But then you're going to say, you know, door number one, that's for mom, uh, mom-to-be, right? And, uh, and mom with baby. And then, you know, door number two, like there's mom-to-be to brand new mom. And then there's, you know, moms beyond that point, right? Um, I love that bump baby beyond. Um, that's awesome.
Yeah.
So, so then basically what you can do is, you know, what stage are you at? Is the question that you're, you're asking when they arrive here.
Yeah, yeah.
You're in the right place. Where are you right now? And then show them what they can get if they are this, show them what they can get if they're that. And then, you know, that's basically a way that you could define your, um, your menu structure or even having like, so you, you have your hero section here where it's, you know, you know, you're in the right place, uh, maybe get them onto your list here, regardless of who they are. And then in the second section, you can say, I help women who are stage, you know, this group and who are also this group, right? And you may be, you may be both all good. I got it all here for you. But you know, pick whichever ones, uh, is, is more you right now. And those can link off to those separate pages where you can really tell a story specifically to, you know, the, the new mom or mom who is in pregnancy, uh, or however you want to divide it basically. But, um, but I think that it, it would be important to just remember that it's, it's, I think it's the same person. I think your person is the same person. They're just at a different, uh, they're, they're in a different season.
Yeah, okay. And that, yeah, I, I'm in the, um, Chrissy Chin's, I'm so while you sleep book club. And they talked about avatars today and just, I was like, is it better for me to just have one avatar? And kind of figure out, I said, because I basically went back to my own personal journey of, you know, who am I, what do I know how to do and how do, what do I know how to do great? And I'm like, for me, you know, dealing with adrenal fatigue since I was 20 and then struggling over the last 20 years to try to figure out how to manage stress that I just was in denial that I had. Um, you know, that led me to, you know, realizing I'm a workaholic. I don't have good stress management techniques to becoming a yoga instructor and mastering those things to then becoming 40, a late bloomer in relationship, meeting my husband in my late 30s. And then struggling to get pregnant, then getting pregnant. And you know, um, just a lot of things that I'm like, okay, well now I can use what I know to help people to not suffer the way I did as long as I did, because I have all the answers. I just need to give them the shortcuts now. And so just trying to bring that back to my website. And so I was like, okay, now I have to come back and re-change.
Is that what this video says?
It doesn't, um, it just kind of.
That would be great if it did.
Yeah. Well, so the, I'm, I'm learning how to do more on-demand video content to explain my brand. So it makes it easier for me. Um, so a lot of that's going to change now that I have a new setup in my workspace. And I've been doing a lot of soul searching and a lot of hard work. So now it's just implementing it. And I just was like, I don't know, work with me and then the maternity beyond, and then the mindfulness. I just want it to all be one, because the, you know, the, the nutrition and the young living part of how I introduce oils for, you know, a natural birth and all that stuff ties back into who I'm trying to serve. It's just where in the stages that they are. And, you know, I've been doing your, um, the, your trainings for this, you know, the, the success academy trainings that you had from like along my original ones, um, for branding my business and the lead workshop, um, generator. And going back and looking at the ultimate destination and then looking at the roadblocks and then trying to figure out where I can fit in something that I can offer at each roadblock station. And so, um, that's kind of how I ended up with the two avatars, because I was like, well, there's, they're both on each side of the spectrum, but I'm like, it would help if I could just make them one person. But I didn't know if that would make sense from a marketing perspective, but
Yeah.
you're saying yes, so I'm going to trust you. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. So think about it like this. Uh, because you're speaking to women, uh, who obviously, and, and the topics that we're talking about here are wellness throughout the cycle of, of, of pregnancy, birth, recovery, and maybe even repeating that process. You could be speaking to someone whose line, it's, you know, it's 360 degrees, right? And so they may be on stage, you know, two of 360, uh, it's 360 degrees. They could be, you know, at, at 300. And that's why I think it's important for you, because and, and that's that, that one, that one avatar could be anywhere on that loop. Uh, so what I would do is, um, like, because that's how you're serving your people, you're not graduating them to a next level per se. Uh, because you are offering services that are very specific to certain stages that she's in and, and, and pregnancy is a very specific thing to deal with. So, um, I, I, I would really kind of create a, you know, a delineation for, you know, are you, are you conceiving pregnant or, or recently post-birth? Or are you mom trying to do it all? Like you, you, you've been through it. You're not, you know, trying to have a baby right now. You aren't currently pregnant. You're just trying to figure it all out and balance life. Um, and, and so then that way, you're basically going to be creating two different work with me pages. And they're going to have some of the same stuff on it, right? Like one of those work with me pages, because you're going to be like, hey, mom, are you this? I'm going to give you a clear path. Don't send her like, because she's overwhelmed, right? So say, I am, I am this. So when they arrive there, you can say, here's, you know, here's my story. Here's how we can work together, right? Uh, and that way it's clear and it's only relevant information to mom that has this set of issues, problems or concerns, priorities, et cetera. And then you've got the other one that's, it's for the other. And they could obviously choose to go look at the others' pages if they want to. But if they're looking for, you know, targeted help right now, we want to send them to where they're going to find the most, uh, directly relevant information. So I would actually divide that up into two. And the good news is, is that this provides a way for you to contextualize the wellness piece to both sides, right? So it doesn't have to be something separate. Um, you know, the, the reset, if you're offering the reset, then, you know, that's something that you could talk about. But in the context of someone who is, you know, working on conceiving, having a baby, et cetera, versus someone who is juggling it all, you know, and, and the other way that you would maybe talk about that, uh, to someone who's not currently in, in their birthing era.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Hope you get some rest. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
And good work. All right. So, uh, thank you guys for sticking around. Uh, thank you Anna Connie for coming out and sharing, uh, your, your journey here. And I really do think that, um, I don't know if you guys heard that, but when she was just explaining there in that last bit about her own story and what led her to do what she does now, that is one of the most compelling ways to share what it is that you do. Because like some of y'all probably heard that and went, ooh, that makes a lot of sense. That's a great lead into, well, how do you help people like me, right? If, if that resonates with you. So, um, successfully of clues. Thank you for sprinkling that around for us. Uh, we'll be back same time next week. If you have a request, uh, for a topic to cover, something you'd like to learn more about, feel free to let us know. We may just go about, uh, creating a resource for you. Uh, Donna has a good question here real quick. Sorry to, to close out with this. Um, how do you deal with the issue of members who don't use email? You call them or you text them. Uh, and you can use your Get Oiling system to send a text to opt them in for text campaigns. Um, and if, of course, they are somebody who is maybe disconnected digitally, uh, then you will just definitely want to make sure you're picking up the phone and calling. Uh, this, um, this company has been around and thriving for, uh, almost as long as the internet has been in our homes. Uh, so, uh, so there's definitely a way to keep it going, um, in terms of, you know, those phone calls and relationships. But you will still, you personally are still going to go in and make those notes in your contact manager. And I think it's going to be even more important to do that, because you can't necessarily rely on, um, on automation fully for someone who's not engaging in the automated world. Uh, so you will want to make sure that you are getting those reminders for yourself to follow up at the appropriate times and to stay in touch. All right. Thank you for that. And with that, we are out for today. Thank you guys. Uh, have a great week, everybody. We'll see you next time.